Sue, could you call the roll and verification of quorum? I will note that one of our board members who has just arrived
Walks in the door.
is moving from the ballpark to the school board. So she's now arrived. Perfect.
Thank you.
All right, Sue, could you call the roll call and verification of quorum?
Ms. Baker. Here. Ms. Daly.
Here.
Mr. Ebel.
Here.
Ms. Earler.
Here.
Mr. Campos.
Here.
Ms. Portson.
Here.
Ms. Rannow.
Here.
Ms. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Wade.
Here.
We have a quorum in progress.
Okay, our next item is the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So moving into item four, and I need to see if I can get it. So it is the consent agenda.
Public comments.
Public comments.
Oh, excuse me, public comments. Sue, do we have, I don't, I'm missing a page. Item four is public comments. No one has signed up to speak. Is there anyone here this evening who would like to address the board on items on our agenda? No one is present. Item five, consent agenda. And we have minutes from our last board meeting and employment recommendations.
So move for approval is presented.
Second, any discussion or questions with respect to the consent agenda? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion is carried. Moving into item six, which is the business services approval of forty-six fund restricted fund balances account.
Good evening. We wanted to bring this up so we could take action as we close out this fiscal year. In background, you'll recall that your folks approved the reinstatement of our ropes course at SPAS. It had been twenty years and had become unusable after all that time, and we have since reinstalled that. One of the things that you asked was that we devise a way to collect some funds, et cetera, and then set those monies aside so it'd be available when that time would come, perhaps another twenty years from now, and we'd have some funding. And we will be establishing that fee schedule before the fall begins. And with respect to the student parking lot, historically back in June of two thousand three, that was resurfaced at a cost of just over eight hundred thousand dollars, eight hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. And parking fees existed at that time. Moving, and there was some discussion at the time of how those fees would be used. I've gone back through all the board records and I haven't found any specific direction. So I'm introducing some suggestions this evening for you. In summary, the ropes course, as I mentioned, we're working on coming up with a fee schedule. We did have one group use the course, however, and they were good enough to make a donation of two hundred and fifty dollars for the use of the course, which is going to tie into one of the things that we're suggesting, that we take the funds at the end of each year for people, outside people who have used the course, and move those monies that we brought in over to the forty-six fund and reserve it over there in a specific account. And we'll continue to do that each year thereafter so that whatever monies are available at the time, should we need them, when we redo the course again in twenty years, it'll be available, and we'll be moving towards that end. With respect to the parking lot in two thousand six, seven, that was the first year that, let me get out my notes here, excuse me, a second. The two thousand, starting two thousand three, four is when we began tracking some of the costs that was particular to the facility itself, the parking lot itself, with repaving and doing various types of activity. To date, that generated over forty-seven thousand dollars worth of costs each year going forward from two thousand three to this year. And student parking fees, the first time that we've actually had the revenue identified specifically as student parking fees was two thousand six. And it generates about thirty, a little over thirty-two thousand a year, thirty-one thousand, something like that. And over all those years, and that totals three hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. So what I'm suggesting that we do is likewise, set that fund aside, those funds aside each year henceforth, so that if we come to have to redo the parking lot up there, the student parking lot alone is a million dollars in cost in today's money. So we need to start setting some monies aside. The net of those two, if you take the forty-seven thousand away from that, we would pull out of our fund balance and put over the forty-six fund, about three hundred and forty-four thousand. We'll have to look at how it closes out this year, but that's pretty close to it, three hundred and forty-four, three hundred and forty-five thousand, right around there. So what the suggestion is in the form of two motions there is one to move monies each year from the monies brought in from the ropes courses, et cetera, to a special account in the forty-six fund, so that it's reserved there each year. And then down the road, if money's needed to repair that course or whatever, there's some funds available, hopefully enough to cover it. The same, the motion really has two parts of the next motion, and that is to authorize us to each year then, with respect to the student fees, at the end of the year, take the amount of student fees that were collected, less any of the costs that the general fund incurred for maintenance that year, and put that net into the forty-six for that parking lot, so that those funds are accrued as well. And then second part of that phase is to allow us to move one time that block of money over, that three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. So that's kind of what we're recommending. Does anybody have any questions? Yes, sir?
Yeah.
I've got a question. How is that money protected? You have it set aside for a specific purpose?
In the forty-six fund?
Yeah.
Yes. We'll devise a specific account number, and then we'll be able to identify that money. It'll be in the reserved balance in that account. That is actually a separate checking account. It's set apart from the general fund completely. It's in a separate bank account. So by law, it has to be done that way. So we would be moving the money out of the general fund into that separate forty-six fund, and then we would use a specific account within that to be able to discern the difference between the two activities.
And what procedure would be required to get it out? Would that require an action of the board to approve funding for the parking lot in the future if we need to spend that money for the parking lot? Would the board have to then approve that?
Yeah, if it were a large sum, yeah. I mean, if it were a fifteen-hundred-dollar item, probably not. But I mean, if it were a large sum, then it would take board action to do that, yeah.
Can that money ever be used for anything else, ever?
No, any money that goes into the forty-six fund has to be used for maintenance, that type of thing.
General, but it can be used for something other than the parking lot, then? Could be used for?
Well, as long as it's, well, once that money's put in the account for the parking lot purposes, it would take the board action to move it to some other purpose.
Okay.
Administration can't do that. No, that would have to be done by the board. But yes, it could be, if that was your choice. It could be used to do to some other thing. But everything in there is used for-
Some other maintenance or construction issue.
Some other maintenance item, yes.
Yeah, if there was, yeah, if there was an emergency or something.
You cannot take that money, for example, and put it back in the general fund. That's prohibited. And we have about, I think it's two years left before we can even access that money, too. You should, I should remind you of that. There was a five-year waiting period from the initial inception, and we opened that about three years ago with a hundred dollars. That's all that's there now, but it got the clock ticking, so.
Any other, Trish?
With regards to the second half, what do you anticipate moving into the parking lot fund and the ropes course? It's a little vague here. It's just moved to approve the annual transfer of revenue from the general fund. It's not very specific. I mean, is, are you anticipating moving just student fees, parking fees into that?
Yes.
That's it?
That's it. The three hundred and forty-five is the net, as I've mentioned, of what's been collected to date. I want to have this, I want board action, and so we have a record of it and authorization to do that. Then on an annual basis, because I went through this all the way back to two thousand three, and I can't find any board action to do this or authorization. So I'd like, of course, and the forty-six fund didn't exist in two thousand three, but we'd like to have it documented to give us authority to move at the end of each year. And specifically in answer to your question, there are two things we'd move at the end of each year. The amounts of student parking fees that were paid, less any amounts that the general fund paid for the parking lot that year. That net would go into the forty-six fund.
It might clarify-
Since I'm moving the full three forty-five at this point, there's nothing at the end of this year to move, other than that full three forty-five.
It might clarify if the motion notes annual transfer of net revenue.
That's a good suggestion, yes. Okay.
And Tom, that does-
If you could make the motion that, then we'll change that.
Yeah. And that doesn't preclude us for adding additional funds to the, to that fund if we, if we choose to do so? If the business, if you come to the board and say, we'd like to add some additional funds for either or for use in that fund, we would be able to do that.
Sure. From time to time, in fact, we may make suggestions, and you may make suggestions to do just that.
Sure.
It could just go in general, not specifically targeted.
Right.
It could go into general purposes in the forty-six fund for maintenance, et cetera, for some future cost.
Sure.
Which might only be a year away, or two years away, or five. You're free to do that at any time, yes.
Okay.
And I don't know if I answered the other question, and that was the fees for-
The ropes course.
The ropes course?
Yeah.
We're just talking about doing that at the end of the year, yeah?
It's just this language, I think it's specific enough, but it's not, it's a little vague.
Okay. All right.
It's fine.
Any other questions? Amy?
So given that we have another two years about on accessing funds out of forty-six, what is our risk of putting three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars into it now when we can't touch it for another two years? If we need it in between, what's the risk involved with moving it with two years to hold on to it in that account? What if we need something done with that parking lot next year, and we can't get this money out because of the two years left?
You'd still have, you'd still have funds available in the general fund to use. It's, it's just that.
Your phone.
Sorry.
If, you know, of course, you're setting up a hypothetical, so I don't know.
Right.
But I mean, if we needed to get at a small amount of money, we could, or a large amount, we could, if we had to rely on the fund balance, that's what that's for, an emergency. But otherwise, there's no other risk. The money is going to be available after two years.
Okay.
Yeah. I should point out one other thing. When we put that money in from the general fund into the forty-six, that is considered an aidable expense. So we will be paid state aid on that as well.
Okay.
What's the rate of the state aid? You know, the rate, state aid, what can, does it match a fund or something? How much, what kind of state aid?
It's an aidable expense. So if we're, if we're in the roughly full fifty percent bracket, then we'd get fifty cents back on the dollar. That will help us on next year's levy, of course, because it, state aids are paid the following year. So if we make this happen yet in June and book it in this month, then we'll be paid state aid next year on approximately half of that money. So it's an advantage to us that way, yeah. It's not then again paid on aid. Once it's spent out of the forty-six, that's not aidable, but money's transferred into that from the ten fund, or aidable at the time you make the transfer.
I will move to approve the establishment of specifically identified forty-six fund restricted fund balance accounts for the SPAS ropes course and the SPAS parking lot.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? I would make one recommendation. I think it might be helpful if we just noted, maybe we could do two separate motions here, Trish, to answer your concern. And we could do a motion to approve the annual transfer of revenue related to the ropes course into the specially designated, identified forty-six fund restricted fund balance for the ropes course. And then we could also then do a separate motion to move to approve the annual transfer of net revenue from the general fund to the parking lot restricted fund, and to approve the one-time transfer of past net general fund parking revenue, approximately three hundred and forty-five thousand, from the general fund's balance to that same account. I'll make that first motion.
I think that's a good way to do it. Trish, if I were you, I would do it that way, and I'll second it.
Did you catch that, Sue? That it would be a motion to approve the annual transfer of revenue from, of revenue that has been given for the ropes course to the specifically identified ropes course forty-six fund restricted fund. Thank you.
Net revenue?
Net rev, yeah, but is-
You want net for both?
Well, do we want net for the ropes course, Tom?
We wouldn't need it for the ropes.
No. We just want revenue.
Because that's donate. It's not the same situation.
Right. So just revenue from the ropes course. Do I, so I had a motion, do I have a second to that?
Chris.
I did.
Okay, second. Any discussion or questions on that motion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
And I'll do the second half, too.
So the second would be-
With the word net added.
Move to approve the annual transfer of net revenue from the general fund related to the parking lot to the specifically identified parking lot forty-six fund restricted fund, and to approve the one-time transfer of past net general fund parking revenues, approximately three hundred and forty-five thousand, from the general fund's fund balance to that same account. Is that the motion?
Second.
That's a second, okay. Any discussion or questions on that motion?
I'll just say that was very specific. Thank you. That's what I wanted. Leave it to a lawyer.
All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Tom.
Ms. Baker.
Okay, we're moving into item twelve, general. A, operations, deferred maintenance, and capital improvement feedback and summary.
We have with us tonight Mike David from Nexus, along with a number of his colleagues, as well as Peter Leatherman, representing Morris Leather, the Morris Leatherman Company. The Morris Leatherman Company recently concluded a, or conducted a survey throughout our community as it relates to, or our school district in general, specifically then as it relates to the potential of a referendum. So if we can get all this figured out, Peter is going to go through probably about a half hour presentation, which is very, very informative, and then we're going to open up that for discussion. Sarah O'Donnell also has some internal information that we will, we'll bring in a little bit later. Peter, you're up.
All right. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. Just to review the process, what we undertook for the, with the district. We spoke with four hundred randomly selected residents across the district. The data is very fresh. The interviews were conducted between June fifth and June fifteenth of this year. Average interview time was eighteen minutes. We had seven percent stay on the phone with us for over forty-five minutes of their own doing. We called them your local historians. I'm sure you know some of them by name. The non-response rate, and part of the reason it takes us a little bit longer in the field than other survey research firms, is because we have to make it convenient for people, especially when you're calling at this time of year. You don't want to bias a survey against those with an active lifestyle, especially households with children, as school's out and they're off on vacation. So five and a half percent of people refused, very low in comparison to industry standards. I thought you'd be interested. Everybody wants to know about cell phones and how they come into play in sampling. This time around in the district, thirty-eight percent indicated that they were cellphone-only households, fifteen percent landline only, and then forty, the remaining forty-seven percent had both cellphone and landline. And as we go through this, the statistical caveat to keep in mind is that the results are projectable to within plus or minus five percent in ninety-five out of a hundred cases. So before we get in the data, I always like to ask, any questions on methodology before we proceed? All right. What we're going to see, we'll look at demographics up front, but I want to give you a kind of an overall preview. And this is a very positive survey for the district. People really do feel good about what's happening in the schools here. They feel really good about the direction the district's moving, as an overarching theme to keep in mind. I thought you'd be interested in seeing how the demographics broke out. The upper left, or the top of the chart, is residential longevity. So you have, a third of the people have been in the community for less than ten years. Well, you have almost a majority being here over twenty. You actually have one in five being here over thirty with the settlers. So the average longevity in the community comes in roughly at about fifteen or sixteen years, a little longer than the typical that we see. There's stability here, not surprising. The age distribution of the respondent, I had one in five being millennials and one in five being over the age of sixty-five. An equal distribution between the five categories that we asked for. Preschool households, one in six indicated that they had a preschooler, toddler, infant in the household. Thirty-one percent indicated that they had a child attending the Stevens Point area public schools. Sixty-three percent were completely out to nesters, no children whatsoever. Many of them indicated they were very pleased with that fact. And then the education level, one in five indicated that they had, were high school graduate or less education. Thirty-six percent, some college experience, short of graduation, and forty-four percent were either a college graduate or had undertaken postgraduate studies. Continuing with the demographics, renters, one in six indicated they were renting, largest self-evaluated value of the home. Now, people tend to inflate what they think their home is worth, but the hundred thousand to two hundred thousand dollar home value, and that pretty much lines up with the data we've seen on where the average actually comes in from across the district. The city of Stevens Point represented sixty percent of the sample. Plover was twenty-eight percent, and twelve percent were in areas outside of those two areas. We always ask on a referendum-type survey where we're looking at potential, it's just the financial situation in the household. And I've been doing this for twenty-five years. We used to ask income. And what we determine in our research is, you know what? Income doesn't necessarily ascribe to whether they can afford a property tax increase or not. What we're looking for is the situation of the household. And one in three folks indicate they're financially stressed. Sixty-five percent, though, indicate they're financially comfortable. Norm on this across, you know, and when I talk about norms, I'm going to be including, we do a lot of work, obviously, in Minnesota and then Wisconsin now also. The norm on this is about sixty percent saying they're financially comfortable. So you have a little bit higher amount of comfortability here. This was very different during the recession. Actually, you could reverse those numbers. Ten years ago, it was two to one saying that they were financially stressed to financially comfortable. And then the male female split, forty-nine, fifty-one. That is intentional. We use a birthday method, because if we just add, talk to the person who answered the phone, it'd be seventy percent female, because men never answer the phone. So we just ask for the person whose birthday is nearest to the date we're calling, and that way we can get a balance that we're looking for. So looking at the general atmospherics in the district, overall, how do folks rate the quality of education here? Eighty-nine percent rate it positively, excellent or good. Eight percent, only fair or poor. Very strong comparatively, almost ninety percent rating it favorably. But what differentiates school district is the excellent rating. As Midwesterners, we're much less prone to be enthusiastic about anything. And it's just a standard blanket statement. It bears out in the data. The enthusiastic excellent rating is twice as high as the norm right now. Twenty-one percent is the norm that we have, and you're at forty percent. Very strong rating and enthusiasm here for the quality of education in the public schools. Now, when they think of the quality of education, what do they like most? Your folks fall into two categories. Call them the personnel folks and the program curriculum is what they're focusing on. Twenty-seven percent talk about the good teachers, and twenty-eight percent, if we combine the variety of programs and broad curriculum as a basis for what they like most about the district. Everything else falls down into single digits. You have athletics in there, you have arts and music, but the two primary making up over half the responses to this open-ended question are teachers and programming. Now, if we ask what they like most, we always ask what the most serious issue facing the district is. And once again, this is open-ended. So when we collapse this down, what we're looking for, if we see a major concern, it tends to register at the twenty to twenty-five percent level. If one in four or one in five people are coalescing around one response in an open-ended manner, we say that that is a major concern in the district. You don't have that. You have two that hit double digits, a lack of funding and large class sizes. We'll explore each of those in a little bit more detail later on in the survey. And then everything else is in single digits, from the aging facilities, discipline, retaining teachers pops up, and we're going to see that a little bit later on, outdated technology, all those sorts of things. But nothing is a major concern. If we go to the far bottom, the nothing category, these are boosters. These folks say there are no problems with the schools, everything's wonderful. And they follow through in that, in the responses, whether they're rating the quality of education, the job of the board, support for referendum. They're very supportive. That's about half the amount that we typically, fifty percent higher. Norm on that's about eight to nine percent. So thirteen percent, if you think about one in eight folks in the district, are what we would classify as a booster. It's a nice basis for any district to be in. Now, how do they say the district's doing on meeting learning needs of students? Do you meet the learning needs of all, most, only, some, or very few? Very strong. Two-thirds of people indicating that all students' learning needs are being met, sixty-five percent. Norm on this right now is fifty-two percent saying all. When we follow up with those that say most, only, some, or very few, we ask, is there a certain, specific type of student whose needs are not being met? And that's the upper right-hand corner. So that is seventeen, fifteen, and twelve percent of the thirty-five percent indicating most, only, some, or very few. And you can see, they coalesce around the average to the underachiever student on that end of the scale. Very little concerned on the gifted and talented portion of it. But still, the major takeaway of this is two-thirds of the residents think that you are meeting the learning needs of all students here. Now, this is a real strong endorsement for the direction of the school district over the past five years. We asked folks to rate the quality of education and compare it to five years ago. Forty-two percent said it's about the same. But what we look at is the ratio of the better to the worse. Forty percent indicate it's either much better or somewhat better. Four percent, somewhat worse or much worse. The ratio then being ten to one to the positive, that things are moving in the right direction. Norm on this right now is about two to two and a half to one of moving in the right direction. So a very strong endorsement. If they see change, it's a positive change in the district. Now, how would they rate the buildings and facilities in meeting the needs of educating children today? Overall, it's a good evaluation of the current facilities and buildings in the district. Eighty-five percent say they're strongly yes or yes they do. Only ten percent, no or strongly no. So what I tell clients at this time is, you're looking at bond referendums, or a bond referendum and considering it. The discussion isn't so much, at this point in time, people don't think the buildings are in terrible shape. That's not the reality they live in. But you can see that the majority of the yes are just softly agreeing with it. They don't feel intensely about it. So the move is to shift them to say it's, they strongly meet the needs of educating children today. And we're going to see that, you have to also give them a definition of what that means as we look at flexible learning spaces specifically. Now, the left-hand pie chart looks at the, do the residents believe in the importance of classroom design to student learning? Your folks really do believe that there's a connection here. Eighty-four percent indicate that it's at least somewhat important, but almost a flat majority say it's very important. We've been asking this question, now, this, the flexible learning space, twenty-first century learning, really has been over the last five to six years, and this is among the highest result that we have in the very important category. They see the link. But now, when you ask them, do the current buildings provide sufficient flexible learning spaces, you see sixty-one percent say yes. So they believe that it's important, but a lot of folks, especially keep in mind, seven out of ten haven't been in a building. They don't have children, they don't have a context for it. You know, it's the definition of what is a flexible learning space? What does a twenty-first century classroom look like today? And that's the education portion that, moving forward. Now, we saw class sizes was tied for first as a concern at thirteen percent in the open-ended. And specifically after- And specifically asking about the three different areas of schools and the class sizes, you can see there's uniform responses amongst all three. Fifty-four percent rate the elementary schools favorably, thirty-four percent unfavorable. Junior high, fifty-three, thirty-four. High school, fifty-eight, twenty-nine. There's really no difference. Oftentimes, we can see in a district where there's a pronounced concern, say at the high school level than the elementary or vice versa. It's pretty uniform. And when we look at the data, if a resident rated one unfavorably, they rated them all unfavorably. There really wasn't any, what you say, horse trading amongst this. They either felt the class sizes were negative or they felt positive about them. Now, some specific perceptions about the district when we're looking at atmospherics. And I want to deal with the three that are, the wording is in green. The top bar, how does, do they feel that the district has spent taxpayers' money effectively and efficiently? Seventy-eight percent agree with that statement, twelve percent disagree. That's an outstanding rating. Norm on that right now is fifty-five percent. So you're twenty-three points higher than the norm on feeling that you're spending taxpayers' money effectively and efficiently. Have you spent past referendum and levy funds responsibly? Seventy-three to fifteen. Once again, the norm on that is fifty-five percent. Those two pretty much go hand in hand with perception. And then, do you consider a tax increase only as a last resort after all alternatives have been considered? Sixty-three to thirty. Norm on that is fifty percent. And those are real hard thresholds when we look at this, that we want those all, we want them to be above fifty-five, fifty-five, and fifty to consider the district to have strong financial credibility in the minds of residents. And you can see you check the box on all three and you check the box extraordinarily high on these three items. Now, the other three, the schools are a good value for the investment. Absolutely. Ninety-three to six. You really can't get ninety-three percent of people to agree on anything in this country nowadays, but on this one, they do. Does the district do a good job of involving the community in decisions? Absolutely. Seventy-eight to seventeen. Norm on this right now is about seventy to seventy-two percent. So it's a very strong rating. It's a very hard standard for a lot of districts because you come into having people, the matrix of allowing people to have their way versus a say. And that oftentimes gets clouded in people's minds, but almost four out of five indicating that's the case, very strong. And then the first time we dip our toe in a question on a referendum, and this is in concept. This is simply asking, the schools are a good investment and I would support a property tax increase for that investment. They don't know if it's a bond referendum, an operating levy, how much it costs, what's their gut. Seventy-four percent agree with that, only fourteen percent disagree. In concept, that core opposition of fourteen percent is about ten points lower than the norm. Normally, that's one in four people that just say, on principle, I oppose. You can see that people are willing to have a conversation in this district about additional funds and what they're used for. Job ratings of the board, sixty-seven to twenty-one. Norm on this right now is about two to one and you're at three to one, very strong. Superintendent and administration, better than three to one. Norm on that is also two to one. Very strong in the governance and the administration. And it also shows us that it's a well-functioning district in the minds of residents. When I see results, say the board is much higher and the superintendent's lower or vice versa, the community's picking up on tension. You can see that this is kind of seen as a symbiotic relationship here between governance and administration and very strong ratings. Principals, they're always loved greater than politicians and administrators. Seventy-nine percent they increase. And then the teachers, eighty-nine to three. Outstanding. Just, you have eight percent unsure and only three percent have negative responses. Your teachers are loved here, and we saw that in the first chart on what they like most about the education. Overall evaluation of financial management, two-thirds rate it favorably. Twenty-six percent only fair or poor, seven percent are unsure. Norm on this is about fifty-two, fifty-three percent. Just overall in, on financial credibility in the minds of residents, just checked all the boxes. It's out there, there's a reservoir, people feel good about the direction of the schools, the quality of education being provided, and the responsible management of the funding. Now, property taxes. This is one of the few times I get to present a survey where I don't have to say that you have an extraordinarily hostile tax climate. You actually have what we would classify as a benign tax climate. And the difference is the high category, very high and somewhat high, thirty-two percent indicate their total property taxes are high, sixty-one percent about average. The norm on this, we are in a hostile property tax situation basically across the Midwest right now over the past two years. The threshold for a hostile tax climate is fifty percent, very high and somewhat high. Actually, I have one client that has seventy-seven percent, very high and somewhat high. That's an extraordinarily difficult tax climate. Yours, thirty-two percent. Following up with their perception of school taxes, twenty-eight percent view them as very high or somewhat high. So even if they do have a concern, there's less of a concern on school taxes, could be the county, could be the city. But it's a climate that allows people on that question earlier when we dipped our toe in the water of the referendum, they're willing to have a conversation because there's not this high level of tax hostility that we see elsewhere. Now, the perception, do they think the schools are adequately funded? Fifty-seven percent say yes, thirty-five percent say no, and eight percent are unsure. This is pretty much what we're finding right now about this, this two to one saying yes. But the key is always, but what else could be included? And we're going to see that when we talk about specifically an operating levy and a bond referendum. So, the predisposition question. And we lead from, on these questions, we move from the general to the specific. You're going to see this flow that way. And so the first question we ask is simply, if you heard the district was going to ask for a property tax increase, would you be for any? Would you be against everything or would you be persuadable? The red, eighteen percent are against all, twenty percent are for all. We consider that a plus two, meaning you have two percent more support at the outset of people that have made up their minds. I call those people, don't confuse me with the facts because we haven't told them what it's used for, we haven't told them how much it's going to cost. They're for it or against it regardless of the information. So plus two is very strong. What we're seeing right now, last November, we worked on twenty-eight different referendum and helped twenty-six of them pass. The norm on those at that point was minus four. Four percent more opposition, so you're in good shape at the outset. But still, the key is going to be the sixty-two percent. The one other thing I'll say about this district is you're not as polarized as we're seeing elsewhere. Normally, right now, what we're seeing is half the people have made up their mind and half the people are persuadable. You actually have sixty-two percent that are persuadable and only about a third have made up their mind at this point. So, then we ask, if you heard the district was going for a property tax increase for a bond referendum, it's our let's make a deal question, how much would you support? Now, keep in mind, from this chart, we have eighteen percent saying, I'm against anything. Now, when we ask for a dollar amount, it jumps to twenty percent saying nothing. That is ten to fifteen points lower than the norm in what's manageable in a referendum. It's typically between thirty and thirty-five percent of people that tell us nothing at the outset. So the twenty percent is a great basis. It indicates this conversation is desired in the community. What it nets out at looking at it, I ran, I run these questions two different ways. I include the nothing in because it pulls it down, but it's eight dollars a month on the average house. If we take the nothing out, realizing they're not going to support anything regardless, and just look at those that are tolerant of a tax increase, where do they come in? About ten dollars and fifty cents a month. Now, you're going to see another one of these charts, and I just want to put the caveat out there that these numbers are not set in stone. They're simply meant to give you an indication of what's reasonable in the minds of a resident at the outset. What's the most dependent is what's included in the package, and we're going to see that next. If a package includes components that are highly supportive, I had one client last election in November, the tolerance came in at ten bucks a month. But they had components that were so highly supported, they went for twenty-seven dollars a month, more than two and a half times the amount, and it passed because the community desired those components. On the flip side, if you go under but include components that aren't well-regarded, it can fail. The key, though, is just to give you an indication at the outset of what's reasonable. What you do then is tie it to the options that are explored for a property tax increase. And it's very specifically asked, would you support a property tax increase for this, for this, for this? You can see you have a plethora of things that are highly supported in this district. Safety and security, eighty-two percent. Infrastructure, accessibility specifically on that portion of the infrastructure, as it was broken out, eighty percent. Technical education spaces, seventy-eight percent. Special education spaces, seventy-six percent. High-tech learning space, seventy-five. Elementary classroom additions with enrollment increases, seventy-four. Infrastructure with, focused on efficiency in buildings, seventy-four. Technology, seventy. Extraordinarily high support. And some of those, we, it's a four-part scale they can use. They can strongly support, support, oppose, or strongly oppose. Some of those, especially the safety and security and the tech ed spaces, almost have a majority of people saying they strongly support that, the use of funds for that purpose. Now, as we go down the chart, we also have gyms at the elementary school with shared cafeteria and gymnasiums, fifty-nine percent. Restrooms at the high school, fifty-eight percent. The parking, bus loading, and drop-off areas, fifty-two, forty-four. And the two at the bottom, the cafeteria and eating space, forty-three, fifty, and additional high school gym, forty-two, fifty-three. The only two that don't have the high levels of support. But once again, as you look at this and prioritize, there's nothing that's a deal killer here. A deal killer is something that has twenty-five percent support and seventy-five percent opposition. It just comes down to, as you put the package together and prioritize this and the dollar amount at the end of the day, the community, and there's very, there's, there's some that are just, you know, what they call leading indicators in a referendum package of where people want the emphasis focused. So, when we ask them for overall evaluation of the improvements, are they a good idea or a bad idea? And do they feel strongly that way? Sixty-seven percent say they're a good idea, twenty-eight percent say it's a bad idea. And if we look at intensity on this, it's better than two to one of folks saying it's a good idea versus a bad idea. Very strong endorsement in concept. They still don't know how much this costs, okay? Looking at sticker shock, if it costs eighty-five million, does it sound like a fair price? Half say yes, half say no. It shows you that there's going to be some concern on the overall cost of the package. But oftentimes, when I work with districts, they become very fixated on what's the big number? You know, what does it look like? What people, what people vote on is how much it costs them. It's not the sticker. You'll have conversations about it, you have to show them and make them understand, okay, it concludes all of these things, thus the sticker price, but at the end of the day, it's how much it costs them. Because eighty-five million, one referendum we worked on last year was two-hundred-and-forty-nine million. It's, you can't conceive that. How does it relate to me on a monthly basis when I make my mortgage payment or every six months when I pay my property taxes? So we then tell them the specific dollar amount. And this amount, we told them on the average house, it was roughly thirteen or fourteen bucks a month. And so realizing that it's a little bit higher than their tax tolerance on the bond, it was eight to ten, the amount we test is fourteen. You had a couple items in there that had a little less support than others, but still you had, you can see the power of those components that are so highly regarded with fifty-seven percent supporting this and thirty-seven percent opposing. Now, the reason for their position on the bond at this point, and if you do move forward, the key will be that the main reason for support of any referendum needs to be the fact that it's needed. What are logical consequences if that fails? And so at this point, it's a soft reason. We obviously, this education's important, that's wonderful. But if, if an election day education is important as the sole reason for their support, they might forget to vote. Because people don't vote, you know, it takes effort, it takes time, they have to understand that it's needed. And so at this point, the need is in the lowest category for the reason for support. Now, on the opposition side, it's the cost, the overall cost for the opponents, remembering that it's a little bit higher than the, than the tax tolerance at the outset. And you can see it's package-specific, only six percent are saying their current taxes are too high and four percent indicating that it's not needed. So, a discussion on the total package amount, bringing it down a little bit, probably would be helpful to help ensure passage at this point in time. Now, the tax tolerance on an operating levy, you can see opposition went from twenty percent to twenty-four percent. And we tell them, explain the difference between bond and operating, and this is in addition to the bond amount they've already told us. So they understand this. The operating levy nets out at about, basically, six bucks a month to eight bucks a month at the outset. What we tested on the operating levy for the three-point-five-million-dollar operating levy, it came in about, I believe about eight to nine dollars a month on the average house. But what we told them in the description was, it was going to be used to maintain programs, class sizes, technology, and help with maintain teachers' compensation. Sixty-eight percent support a three-and-a-half-million-dollar operating levy, twenty-seven percent oppose. And if you look at the intensity, it's better than two to one strong support versus strong opposition. Because even though the dollar amount is a little bit higher, the components in there are so highly regarded. And so you actually have, for the reasons on this, need now goes to nine percent, but two percent each talk about maintaining class sizes and retaining teachers as a specific reason. Obviously, the cost has gone down than the bond referendum, so the cost reasonable went up and the cost too high went down. But as you plan for this, you know, the discussion does have to revolve around logical consequences and need that people understand. Midwest, we're very sensible. There are very few districts that can get away with just having nice facilities because we want nice facilities or more money because we want to do all these wonderful things. We want this to be needed. And there has to be logical consequences if it fails. People have to understand that there's skin in the game. Because the last thing you want is for it to come and it fail and the next day people say, and then you have to make cuts or do something, and people say, we didn't realize that and I might have changed my vote. Doesn't help after the fact. Now, this was unique because you were looking at potentially a nine-million-dollar operating levy that combines both. And we told them that instead of doing the two questions, it can be combined into one. The dollar amount is the same, no difference on the, it's just a total versus separate. You can see support drops forty to forty-five percent, opposition comes in at forty-eight percent. And you can see the intensity is eleven percent strong support to nineteen percent strong opposed. What's happened in looking at the data, and I went in and I asked, I told the community, give me levy supporters and bond supporters? And how do they vote on this? Because what happened is you have people, and every district has them, they're going to support bricks and mortar. They like facilities, they're not interested in funding salaries or administration or anything like that. On the flip side, you have people that care about the education in the classroom and they're not going to pay for buildings. And that's precisely what happened. The split on a bond supporter that won't support an operating levy was five percent of people. On a levy supporter who won't support a bond is sixteen percent. So there's a twenty-one point switch between the two when you put them together that they then move into the core opposition. They're just, it's not a solution that one in five people, they don't want both. But you have the horse trading that you're going to have people that are going to support the bond and not the levy if you have two questions. This risks everything by putting them together. Now, I mentioned, I've talked about it a couple times, a statement of support, the teacher shortage is a major concern here. And I'll give you the specific wording. And we, we frame this question, these questions up with And we, we frame these questions up with messaging. Let me read you some reasons people are stating in favor of additional funding for the district. For each, tell me if it makes you much more likely to support a property tax increase, somewhat more likely, or does it make no difference to you? Because of the teacher shortage in Wisconsin, the school district needs funds to attract and retain quality teachers. 45% indicate that makes them much more likely to support a property tax increase, total impact of three quarters. Keep in mind that 67% said that they would vote for the levy at the outset, but with that fact, three quarters are indicating, it's even playing amongst those that are opposed and uncertain. Now, the rest of the arguments kind of go around in what I call the echo chamber of support. I support, it just hardens my support. So, state funding has not kept pace with inflation, 31% say it makes them much more likely. The comparison to the neighbors on both the, the funding and the mill rate, we see this again and again across the state. People don't care about their neighbors. We're us, we're specific, we have our values, what they do is what they do. How does it stack up? And it resonates very well amongst supporters, but not to the persuadable category. What is interesting is the, is the message that you haven't had a successful, a voter-approved increase in operating levy since 2006. Normally, if you can tell somebody that it's been more than a decade before you, since you've had a voter-approved operating levy, you get more people saying, yeah, it's probably time. A lot of things have happened, heck, that's before the last, the recession. Not so much here. The message here is all about the teacher shortage and retaining and attracting quality teachers. Couple more. We're asked to do a question on grade configuration. This is very limited interest at this point in time. In changing to a K5, 6, 8, 9, 12 model, the left-hand pie, 42% support, 46% oppose. Intensity, better than two to one, strong opposed versus strong support. Now, amongst the supporters, the 42%, we did tell them that if a grade configuration model, if the change was implemented, there would be a tax increase. And we gave them a dollar amount. And then we asked, would you still support changing the model with a property tax increase? You can see 38% indicate, yes, they would. So that's 38% of the 42, which is why at the bottom I have total support, those that are all in for changing the model and funding it, is one in six, 16% of the residents at this point in time. Not an issue that we would consider ripe from a survey perspective. And then a couple of questions on communication. Where are folks getting their information? This is open-ended. The district website leads the list at 28%, followed by the local newspaper. But combine the next two, because it's the grapevine. 35% either specifically say friends, neighbors, teachers, or staff. And that is a powerful grapevine when more than one in three people are getting their information, their principal source of information that way. Something that needs to be kept in mind as you move forward in planning, that the district website's great, but always keep in mind, if the district website's how you're relying on people to get information, they have to go get that information. You can't get it to them. The newspaper, on the other hand, that information gets to them. And the grapevine, it all matters on what's in the grapevine at this point in time. What we know now at this point in time, when we look at the overall atmospherics in the district and the perception of the quality of education, the grapevine's very positive at this point in time. And then finally, how do people prefer to receive their information? The website leads the list. You can see email jumps up now to 18%. It's kind of the easy answer. Instead of people saying, mail it to me, they say, email it to me. The local newspaper, about one in five is how they would like to receive it, and then everything else down. So, it's a lot of information. I'm sure you have a lot of questions I'd be happy to answer.
Questions for Peter? Comments?
Too much to absorb, Jeff?
Yeah, this is one of those times where maybe everyone needs to just kind of breathe for a minute.
Lots of, lots of good information, thank you.
Just thinking through it and kind of reading through.
Is 400 surveys sufficient?
Yes. It's because, yep, a 400 sample, as long as you do it in a random manner. And by random manner, it's why we don't do mailouts and we don't do internet surveys, where you have self-selection. And people can opt in, and they tend to have very strong opinions one way or the other. I mean, most people don't opt into a survey to say, it's good. You opt in because you're mad about something, or you're thrilled about something. And so doing a telephone survey, and when I look at the demographics to validate it against census information, a 400 sample is always projectable to plus or minus 5%. It's not the percent of the population, it's the sample size itself. So a 400 Stevens Point school district, or 400 across the state of Wisconsin, is plus or minus 5%.
Have you worked with other districts that we might be familiar with that are, you know, central Wisconsin or?
Recently, we've worked with DC Everest, Luxembourg, Casco, Ellsworth, a lot along the 94 corridor coming out of Minnesota.
Oh, sure, okay. So, so the DC Everest, they just passed a big one, I think, last year?
In the spring, wasn't it?
Just, just last spring.
Yeah, okay. And, and when you think of the numbers, you did a survey similar to this for DC Everest, when you think of the numbers and the results from DC Everest, and you, and you look at ours, how do they, I presume the questions were pretty similar? How, how would you compare the, the takeaways of the DC Everest survey and our survey?
Theirs was very positive. They were only exploring the bond referendum, which helped, I mean, it always makes it easier, one question versus two. So with bond referendum and operating referendum in play, it kind of confuses the mix. The overall atmospherics in the district, those questions on financial management, everything, very similar, very strong. Both districts have what I call a reservoir of goodwill out there. You're not in, you know, a referendum, whether a bond, operating levy, or both, you burn political capital. The problem is when a district doesn't have any capital to burn, and then it becomes very difficult. You have capital to burn, people trust you, they want to have a conversation, there's high levels of support. So I mean, the, the support is there. I think that they had a higher tax tolerance off the top of my mind, but it passed quite overwhelmingly.
Yeah, they had 71% support.
Oh, my goodness.
Outstanding support. But again, you've got, the goodwill here is comparable. It's, what we need to look at is making sure we have the right mix of improvements proposed, and then how it is actually structured automatically.
Okay, thank you.
So, a couple questions. So putting the two questions on, if you're looking at the people, I mean, is it pitting one question against the other, I guess? If someone says, I'm willing to vote for this but not for this, I'm probably not going to vote for both if they're both going to increase my taxes.
The data does not indicate that's the case. Not to the level that it would endanger both of them, as long as the tax increase is in line. I mean, what, what happens, I mean, you have 57% support the bond and 67% support the operating. They knew all the qualifications of that, they knew there's separate tax increases, they know there's separate uses of funding and everything. And so it is, it's typical, you know, the hierarchy here, with the operating funding being at 67%, part of it is the cost was lower. You know, it is, it is a calculation. You know, and, and the one thing we do do in the survey is, we rotate the options, so people don't, you know, half the people get the operating levy first, half the people get the bond referendum first. So there's not a self-prioritization in that regard. So, you will have people that will support, and that's what happened with the combined question.
Right.
You will have people support one versus the other. The key is, at this point in time, you have a majority, and a substantial majority in the operating levy supporting something.
So one other question. So, when you're looking at, having not passed a referendum for a number of years, and you're looking at a recurring referendum, okay? And yet, when I look at, and I've been involved with some of the referendums, when I look at, you said that it really shows that people don't care about neighboring districts and what they're, they're paying. But at some point, somebody's going to say, well, how did we get in, in this kind of shape where we have to have this much money every year to continue, you know, to fix what's broken and continue? And I'm just talking about, you know, a layperson who's not looking at all this. And for me, if I look at the two, we had two graphs of the mill rate compared to neighboring districts, where we, we're at the bottom compared to so many. I mean, as a layperson, year after year after year, it would say to, to them, this is why. This is why we're at, because we've deferred and deferred and deferred, because this is where our mill rate is. Look at the other districts. I don't know how that doesn't make sense.
It's not that it doesn't make sense. It's not the highest level, it's not the major reason that they would use to support it.
Right.
I mean, if we could go back to that, I mean, 50, 59% and 57% indicated and made them more likely. It was just, but what happened was, it didn't, anybody who opposed or was persuadable, the argument, it really made no difference.
And I think in a general question, that argument might not make any difference to me either. But if I looked at the graph where we were as to other districts, that would make a difference, I mean, as a taxpayer.
If I'm looking at it as a messaging point, though, it's to link it to the top.
Right.
Because we have less funding, the lower mill rate, we have concerns about attracting.
Okay.
Not so much the reason.
Right.
Okay, here's the cause, what's the symptom of that problem?
Okay.
Is a more effective message.
That makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Is this information available, would be on the website, the school website?
It will be, yes.
I guess I'm just, I'm just, I'm just so incredibly pleased at the support that the community appears to be providing, I mean, to, to the board, to the administration, to the principals, excuse me, and to the teachers. I mean, this is, this is just a very, it just, I don't know, it just makes me feel very appreciative that the community is telling you that they see that we, as a board and administration, are on the right track. And that they are providing information in the survey to suggest that they, they are willing to have that conversation and that dialogue with us about the needs that we, that we are seeing. Because, you know, administration's been knee-deep in this for a really, really long time. And the board has been being provided with information for quite some time. But we have not provided significant, specific information to the public. We have to our school community, to our, to our staff. But it sounds, from what I'm hearing, that the community is saying that they, they want us to do that. They want us to provide them with the information about what we see as needed with the schools. But they're also giving us a message about some specific items that they've got some questions about. And so, I guess, my question is, well, and I guess we're going to be, we've got a couple more items on the agenda, but, but where do we go next? I mean, we clearly have gotten some, some significant input from the community, and what is administration and Nexus's next step? I mean, kind of where do we go from here?
If I may, we clearly have strong support in general for our school district, I think that's loud and clear. We have strong support for an operational levy referendum, and we have strong support for what I would say is significant bond referendum. I'm also hearing, and I've talked to Peter and Mike several times over the last couple, couple days, we have to separate the questions. I think that was demonstrated. Given that, we won't have any action or even consideration tonight regarding the resolutions, we have to go back and bring forward two questions. And it appears both have a very good chance of being successful. The concern would reflect the two issues on that list that you had, Peter, specifically the, the added gym space, and let's call a spade a spade. It's, it's the issues at Smash. And in talking with, with Mike and Peter, if we have a bond referendum, and certainly the gymnasium's on there, we risk failure because of that, and if you want to speak to that.
Yes, with, with two items on this list at less than a majority support, and with cost, you had 57% support, with cost being the concern amongst opponents, and you can, you saw it bear out in the reasons. When you have a discussion, there are, items can become lightning rods and proposals. Additional gyms, ice arenas, sometimes auditoriums, performing arts, those sorts of items sometimes can become deal killers. And to have two in is potentially a problem if it's a large portion of the total package. And when, when we go for the planning, some people talked about not need. And gymnasium, I won't make that evaluation, but to some people, it's a want versus a need in that sense. And we know that there is some sensitivity on taxes. So it makes sense, I think, to look to reduce it from the 85 million a bit. You have all of these items that have such high support that it makes sense to pare it back a little bit with the, with the three and a half million dollar operating levy and split it into two questions. That's, that's what the data tells us is the best way to proceed forward in the minds of residents at this point.
That said, our plan would be to go back and bring forward two questions, and, and change the scope of the, of the, the bond question as it relates to this data. And I guess I'm looking for some feedback from, from the board, if you're, A, interested in us doing that, and, and if there's consideration for something here that you would choose for us not to include on it.
Judy?
Yeah, when you were going through that, it, I think we need to go back, because what we have here is, we can't move on this based on the data that we have. So we'll have to, to me, we'll have to come back and see how we do that with two questions.
Amy?
I would support pulling out the cafeteria and high school gymnasium. I've driven through some other districts who are trying to pass referendums for a lot of things, but in that referendum, the sticking point was a new gym. And there were signs, people would buy billboards, it turned into a whole fiasco, and their referendum did fail because the community perceived the addition of another gym was not necessary, and they failed their referendum miserably. So I, if it's, I'm, I would support removing that.
Both, the gym and the cafeteria?
Yeah.
Is there an alternate plan to what was originally proposed for the cafeteria? And I know that's an important issue at Smash. And I know that's an important issue at SPAS. Is there?
The cafeteria is an important issue, and you know, we haven't spent a lot of time talking about that. You know, it, it serves, right now, our current cafeteria is set up to feed maybe three hundred students at a time. We have fifteen hundred students in there. And it forces students to go into two separate areas. It forces students in hallways. It forces students to sit on the ground. If they were all in one area, supervision, and I would argue that it creates a safer environment. We have all of the students in a viewing area. We've got a lot of students up there. Reducing the scope of that, you know, I brought that up with, with Nexus. Sure, you can do a lot of different things. But when you reduce the scope of the cafeteria, you reduce square footage. You don't necessarily save an awful lot. And if we were to eliminate, and trust me, I'm not a fan of eliminating the, the gymnasium, but I get it. You know, I do have a lot of faith in, in the information that's coming forward. Quite frankly, on Thursday, when I met with Peter and Mike, actually, we were on a conference call, I was very impressed with the information. If we eliminate the, the gymnasium, for example, we still have the issues of bathrooms as it relates to the fieldhouse. We can still keep the bathrooms in a very natural place as it's connected to the, to the cafeteria area, which can be used for students during lunch, as well as all the community activities and athletic events. But if we eliminate the gym, you can always come back at another day, another year, because it's incorporated into the plan that we have. Soon as you alter that cafeteria, and you want to talk down the road about maybe continuing the conversation of SPAS, it changes that, and I'd be a bit concerned about that.
Trish?
You know, I heard, the first time that I heard that students were doing sports activities at SPAS, practice sessions at nine o'clock at night, the first time I heard that was just a couple of months ago here. And, and I guess my, my question, I mean, I found that concerning. I don't think students should be doing sports practicing at nine o'clock. But we don't have a facility that allows them, that allows more teams to practice at different times. And because of the congestion of one gym. And I, and I guess my, my question is, and there, you know, this is, I'm just kind of maybe throwing this out rhetorically, but, you know, if, if we can get more information, my, my guess is, is that there are other people like me in the community who say, "What, students are doing their, their sports training, their practices at SPAS in the gym at nine o'clock because it's so congested, and then they have to be back at school at seven-thirty in the morning?" But my, so my question is, do you think if we got that information out into the public, would that be persuasive to support the new gym? I, I, I found that very troubling information myself.
You know, the same can be said about cafeteria.
Yeah, yes, exactly.
Who knows that there are students eating their lunch on the floor? And all the efforts that we made, that the district made, to improve the quality of the lunches. Now, they got the app where you can go online, you can see exactly the nutritional content of everything. You can see the menus while in advance. I mean, that's what's driven more students to actually stay on campus and, and take advantage of the lunches. But we can't, we can't accommodate them anymore, so. I don't know, again, if that message has gotten out.
I think one of the, the statements, and having been involved with a number of referendums, is, you know, this is a need-based community. If they believe there's a need for it, they'll support. I mean, you, you look at how generous all of our businesses and all of our community is. But if it looks like we, we need another gym, you know, to add on, because we've got so many sports teams and so many, we, you may support the sports, but if it looks like it's a, an added extra benefit to students, not a needed, you know, gymnasium, that's gonna make a big deal. I mean, cafeteria-wise, and I'd like to, I'd like to keep it if we can, I think it's, it's important. I say you just have to come back to us with what makes the most sense. And what you believe, you know, is a priority. Looking at this, it looks like the gym is not gonna make it, or shouldn't be a part of it.
Well, this is a big deal.
Yeah.
Sooner or later, we're gonna, we're gonna, and it's, it's coming down to sooner than later. You, as a board, are gonna have to make a decision. Obviously, you've got to have a, a very clear resolution, which, quite frankly, I thought we were gonna present tonight. The latest data we got from, from our survey, which has been very successful in, in the results of what they receive. What, what they get from the survey is very successful in terms of what happens at the pool. We have to listen to it.
Yep.
And we might disagree with having nine o'clock basketball game or practices at SPAS. But from what I understand, if that's in the question, we can do all the convincing we want. Based on what we know right now, that won't pass. We could, for a conversation, we could have a third question and have SPAS stand alone as it relates to, we're talking now just about a gymnasium. There's also some components to SPAS as it related to the, the swimming pool area, and there was, there was another.
And the tech ed.
The, the tech ed is clearly a part of this. There isn't anything, there hasn't been any conversation, and of course, the survey results are very, very clear. There's strong support for, for increased tech ed space. That's one consideration, is to have that be a standalone question. Now you have three questions. And I, and I brought that up, and I have, I'm getting mixed reviews on that. Other than asking Peter, does that risk the other two questions?
No. When, and doing, I've done hundreds of these. And it's always simplest, the least number of questions is always the simplest, absolutely. So when we initially started the survey, the nine million dollar operating levy, oh, that would be really convenient. One question, knock it all out. Data shows that two questions are needed, but there needs to be tweaking. There is, if you do a third question with the gym, I think easily, and hearing the discussion, you know, you're, you, the, the bottom two, you're, they're not at twenty-five percent support, seventy-five percent opposition. It's just when you're looking at the cost, and especially with the gym, it's a significant cost to a total package because there are other things that needed to be added back in to the package because they have such high levels of support. The cafeteria and eating space, I think, is a much easier message to communicate and have people understand because it involves all students.
Right.
All students have to eat. Not all students play sports or extracurriculars, those sorts of things. Does a third question with the high school gym specifically endanger the first or second? No, I don't see that being the case because you have high levels of support. You're listening to the community, and on the gym, you basic, I mean, it's a five, it's five points. Let the community decide if, if that's the case. If you can make the argument in the messaging, the problem is, it's a political environment. It's difficult to get messaging out in the next four months. But it should not endanger question one or two because you're being financially sensible. Instead of just putting in and into one big question, this question, it divided the community, let them decide.
Does it complicate the messaging in general?
Well, more questions always, you already have a complex environment by having an operating levy and a bond together in, in that sense. It pulls out, it'll put a spotlight on that one. It'll spread the attention, shall we say, and the focus of a vote yes campaign. Do you want them laser-focused on two or spread out with a third in that sense? That'd be, that'd be the one risk on thinning the message out.
Therein lies, again, my interest of the cafeteria not changing the scope of that. If that stays in, it lends for expansion naturally based on, on the plan that we have. And also, look, we, it's much, it's, it's beyond eating. You know, it's, it's a learning environment where we can have large group of, of students engaged at one particular point in time. You know, we're very limited for space, other than the fieldhouse itself. And of course, that's not, that does not lend itself for a, for a, for a learning space.
I, I guess if I were, if I, you know, if I were making a decision right now, I would keep the, the gym off the question at all. I would not put that in there, but I would like to keep the cafeteria in, and I'd like to keep it to two questions. I think, I think you're right, the more you put in there, and I think the more you put in there, the less it looks like need. It looks a little like.
You're giving them something to vote.
Right.
Oftentimes, I'm not saying this is the case here, but in other districts that have done it, I mean, we did one district that had five questions. It was.
Too much.
But literally, the community realized that you're throwing a sacrificial lamb out there.
Right.
You know, and when we work on referendum, we don't believe in dress rehearsals. You go for what you need, and you go for it with a gusto. Explain to the community, do it once and win. As opposed to have to come back and modify and everything just to get to that point.
Judy?
Based on comments that you've made and what I see up here, are you going to go back and look at some of the things that we had taken out specifically, I'm thinking about the gyms and cafeterias, eating spaces at the elementary schools? Are you gonna be looking at some of those things and maybe bringing a different package back, if you will?
Yes, and, and we've started having some of those conversations and thoughts. I shared this, our last presentation with our leadership.
Okay.
And, and receives specific comments from, from two administrators. One specifically with Roosevelt, because we, we cut back on, on Roosevelt and, and the comments from Kelly were, Craig, we just can't make it. We, we can't, we, we need that space. And then the issue of, of the gymnasium cafeteria, and a suggestion was mentioned, and that was brought up, Tom had mentioned many times over the course of, of years, having electronic dividers. At least it, it's less, it's, it's quicker, less manpower to, to open and close the gymnasiums and, and make them more, a little bit more efficient. But quite frankly, if we start adding back, you know, we, we can come back with a reduction of, you know, I'll say, you know, to get to those numbers, we're looking at about a reduction of ten million dollars, which we can do, but we gotta be careful with what we bring back. If we think we're gonna bring back our, our cafeteria gymnasium space, which gets a relatively high support, our numbers are gonna be right back to where they were at, at the levels that we're, we're here, we're at now. And what I'm hearing, it's not just the gymnasium and the cafeteria. It's because the numbers aren't necessarily positive, but they're not extremely negative. But it's a combination of that and the cost. And if the cost is, is higher than people would like to see, and you've got a couple hot buttons in there, that's just a reason for people to vote no.
Is it the cost or the use of funds that they object to? It seems to me that it wasn't so much the cost as it was, they just didn't want to see those funds going to that particular use.
It's, it's the, okay, this is not specifically the dollar amount, not attached to this. This is just in concept for that. When we test this question, though, keep in mind that we almost go, almost double the amount of that tax tolerance. And you still had fifty-seven percent support. So while you did have those two issues at the bottom, those, that high level of support for everything else lifted it up. The problem is, and is, is, as you mentioned earlier, that gymnasium has the potential to become a lightning rod. And I mean, I've seen, we did, worked with the district a few years ago, hundred-and-fifty-five million dollar referendum, artificial turf. Artificial turf was six-hundred thousand dollars out of a hundred-and-fifty-five million. If they would have included it, it would have failed. They didn't include it, it passed eighty, twenty. It, it's, so it's just one of those things that can become the potential. I don't see the cafeteria that way, because I think with the cafeteria, and also, I mean, the parking bus loading drop-off, that's safety and security.
Right.
And from what I'm hearing with the cafeteria, that also has a potential safety and security issue. And some aspects of education that go into it also. So that's why, you know, I really, yeah.
So it is, then, it's the use of funds, not necessarily the dollar amount.
The dollar amount, yeah.
I don't, personally, I would much rather see our elementary schools not have to share a cafeteria and a gym than an additional gym be added to SPAS. I think that if we were going to do a swap-out, I would really support adding those cafeterias. We have six schools that got, on the remodel, when the deferral ratio got taken down by more than half. And those six schools, I would say, are probably the ones that need the cafeteria and gym split. And I, I think it's an important thing for our students.
Well, I think it's a health issue with that, too, because those kids are horsing down their lunches really fast to get out of there. And I had one grandson who had issues with having to eat that fast. And, I mean, they had to make special arrangements for him.
So Craig, where do we go from now?
I think, I think, I think Craig is probably, wants to ask each of us where we would like to, like them to go, or what, what, what we would like them to, to bring back. I mean, I, I, this is a referendum that's for the district. And when you look at where the support is coming in, I agree with Amy that, that you don't want to have one specific item draw all of the attention and all of the conversation. And that's my concern with the gym. I'm more comfortable with conversation with the cafeteria, because I'm sitting here as a resident thinking about the many, many times I was in the district, you know, not necess, in SPAS, not necessarily related to my child, whether it was the cultural festival, or, you know, the, the, the different SPAS plays, the different productions, the community events that happened there that would be utilizing that broader cafeteria. I also really feel it's essential that we figure out how to get, we have to get bathrooms. I mean, we need to get bathrooms in SPAS nearer to that fieldhouse than where they're at. I, I just, I think that that's, and it's, it's a minor thing, but it's something. So I guess I'm, I'm coming out on the, I'd like administration to take a look at coming back to us without the gym, and with the option of keeping cafeteria in, or, or, or not in, if that's where they feel we need to go. But also having that option that's being raised about what, what would happen if we pulled back in the cafeteria gyms at the, at the elementary level? Because we're seeing some support for that. I don't know if that makes things more complicated for, for everyone. We're clearly on, we're, we're, but, but we're honing in on stuff. I mean, I feel like, over the course of the last several months, we've gotten so many different parts of communication, internal and external. And, and it's not our referendum. I mean, we, as a board, have the responsibility to choose to go to referendum. But this is the community's referendum. And we've, we've got to take very seriously what both our internal community and our external community is telling us about what they want their public schools to be. I'm concerned, as I said, that, that if the gym stays in, that becomes the focal point. And we spend a lot of, we, we waste a lot of capital, conversation and communication on, on trying to persuade that. So I guess that's where I'm at. I'm, I'm wondering if board members are comfortable, kind of if we can just go around, and if people are comfortable saying where they're coming from. I think maybe it'll help Craig and Nexus hone in on what we'd like to see them bring back in July. Trish, do you wanna start? Trish, do you want to start?
I really appreciate this survey. This is just terrific, great information to have, and likewise, I want to see this pass. I feel really strongly about the cafeteria, that that's a needed space. We've done great things to keep our students in. Anybody that works in that part of town sees five, six students crammed in a little car, driving as fast as they can to Culver's and back, and, and it's, you know, it is far better to keep our students in a cafeteria that's a great space for collaboration and so forth. So my, my unofficial consensus comment is that we remove the gymnasium and perhaps make that as a third question, but the two questions, which would include the cafeteria, and then, you know, put the gymnasium on there as a third.
Dan?
You know, I'm struck by the fact that we spend hours at a time going over this data, and being a data-driven person myself, it's hard for me to ignore what we've been shown today. It's our responsibility as elected officials to make a lot of decisions, and we don't, you know, it's fundamentally unfair to ask the public to be involved in a lot of those detailed decision-making processes that we spend months and years talking about and leading up to. But this is different. This is a referendum that we are going to ask the voters of this district to make the decision on. So we need to take their opinions into account, we need to listen to them. I do believe that, from the data that I've seen, that two questions are called for, and that the gymnasium probably ought to be pulled out, and we can look at that later, and maybe we go back to the voters later and ask them, can you support this? I don't have an objection with a third question. I know it complicates things, and I know that there would be the perception that we're throwing out a sacrificial lamb, I like that term, but I would not oppose that. It, once again, is asking the voters what they would like to support in their district. So for this particular set of questions, I, I would not oppose a third question, but I do think we need to, to make it a little bit more transparent for the voters, a little bit easier for them to understand, even though it complicates messaging a little bit, we just have to try a little bit harder. And to go with two questions, with the gymnasium as a, as an item that is pulled from those two, whether we include it as a third or not, I guess that's up for, up for discussion.
I've indicated to Craig earlier what, what my feelings were. I think we really need to solve that problem at the elementary schools with their gym, cafeteria sharing. I agree the gym, high school gym should be pulled from that. I'd like to see the cafeteria eating space stay in, but maybe it could be scaled back, not a bit. You know, it seemed kind of over the top a little bit. I don't know how much money that would save, I mean, but, other than that, I'm, I'm good.
Chris?
I guess I said before, I think I would like two questions. I would pull the gym out, I wouldn't, I wouldn't add it in as a question, and I would try to keep, try to keep in the cafeteria. I've seen a need for that over there, but I also would like to look at the cafeteria and gyms settings in the elementary. You know, if it's a, I don't know, I guess, one against the other in that, take a look at the cost, you know? Maybe we can't do them all, I don't know, but I would pull the gym out, and I would try to keep that, the cafeteria in, it's FAS, I think it's needed.
Amy?
I would pull the gym out, and I, I'm open to keeping the high school cafeteria going, changing my original statement. I, from the discussion, have seen that that is probably, it is needed. I, I think it can be scaled back a little bit. I really do want to see the elementary schools that share the gym and cafeteria. I, that's, that just seems so 70s. I mean, that's when you had your little neighborhood schools, and it needs to get updated so that we can accommodate our growing number of students. I'd support two questions. I'm indifferent as to putting the high school as a, the gym as a third question. It's, it just seems like it would be something that wouldn't fly very well, but maybe you need that.
Mike?
Well, it's, I really appreciate the detail of the survey. That's extremely helpful, helpful for us tonight. I, I am, and as much as I'd like to have a gym, because, you know, like Trish said, it's hard to imagine students either that late or that early all scrambling for this space, so I would really like to have the additional space, but I am okay pulling the, the gym. It would be nice to see, at least from a dollar perspective, what that would look like in the question, if, as a third question, if that's not difficult to do, even though I think the simplicity of two questions is, is probably a better route. I would like the, the administration to have enough flexibility on the, on the cafeteria issue for the high school. You know better the needs at the elementary level with the, with the cafeterias and the gym. That is sort of an awkward situation, as it's been described to us, but I think you guys know best on that, and I'm, I'm going to look to you to, to balance that out, you know, as far as the, the bond issue, what, what you think is your best recommendation there.
Jeff?
First, a clarifying question. Are the gyms for the elementary schools, is that included in that $85 million package?
No.
No. Okay, so that would have to go?
I think they all were pulled.
Pulled.
Right, that's what you told us last time. I asked that.
Okay, so again, based on, well, again, first, thank you. This is great, and I love the explanation of what's going on. So the analysis is great, and it really helps us understand exactly what the numbers, what this is telling us. I don't think you go to your community and you ask them what they think and, and not listen to them. So, I mean, they, it's pretty clear what they're, the message that they're telling us, and again, this is their school district. This is, this is their school system, and I'm very sensitive to that, and there, I understand the opposition to the gym. I have no problem pulling that and offering that as a separate referendum. I think the school cafeteria, I don't think the need, we've, I don't think we've had the opportunity to express the real need for that to the community, and I think we have a very strong case to make, to explain that to the community, and I think they would support that. Otherwise, again, the support from the community is, is very impressive, and I think I'm basically saying what, what I've heard from the rest of the board tonight, so.
Judy?
Yeah, I would agree. Two questions, pull the gym. I'd like to also see what it would look like as a third question, potentially, and then take, and see what adding the gyms, the elementary gyms, that shared space would look like in those questions. So based, based on all of this information, that's what I'd like to see.
I just want to say about the elementary cafeteria gym, the one thing that struck me in the presentations, I mean, actually, there were lots of things that struck me, but this one struck me in particular, was the principals that have both a cafeteria and a gym have a whole different flexibility in terms of the scheduling of their academic day, and the principals who don't, who have the shared cafeteria and gym, all talked about the fact that they have to create their academic schedule around that shared facility, that they, that they've got to get the kids in at a certain time for lunch, and they got to get the kids in for FIAED and for the other activities that they, they need. And that, that did really strike me as like, from an educational institution, exactly the opposite way that we should be doing things. I mean, we shouldn't be scheduling based on lunch and FIAED. We should be scheduling on academics and what the kids need, and, and when, when they're best able to focus on the various things they're able to focus on. And so I just, that really, that really called to me. I just hadn't considered the impact that that has on the scheduling of those elementary schools that don't have that, and, and it makes me, it's one of those, it's just, it made me feel uncomfortable in terms of equity. I mean, in terms of ensuring that every elementary school, every elementary student in the district has consistent experience within their school buildings. I mean, all of them have their own personality, and all of them have their own demographics, and all of them have their own unique needs and unique, but, but from a district perspective, I feel like there's certain things that we have the obligation and the, to make sure it's the same in terms of facilities.
Barb?
How many elementary schools currently share? Are we talking three elementary schools, and then increasing the size of Roosevelt's? Is that like the fourth?
Mike, do you know that?
It's, it's six.
Six.
There were six.
Share.
Correct.
Is that including Roosevelt? No.
No, they don't.
That's just, so six, plus Roosevelt having a very small.
Yes.
Okay. There certainly are, certainly are some common themes here that gives us direction. Without actually sitting down with Nexus, with Tom, looking at our plans, I'm a little, I'm mildly concerned that adding the cafeterias in six buildings could go over our threshold, and without having our experts and our blueprints in front of us, when we eliminated some cafeteria slash gymnasiums out of the, the plan, so we, so we, and then went back to sharing, did, were there other items there that were cut that have to come back because of the structure of the building? So the cost might not be just the square footage of a new gymnasium, could be added cost of certain hallways that have to go. So we really have to do analysis, and, and the next question that I have, maybe for you, Peter, when we do that, this, though they have relatively high support at 59%, you know, where are we on this scale in terms of lightning rods?
The, I, let me understand your question. Are the gyms at the elementary school with shared spaces lightning rods?
Yeah, that's.
No, no, not, not at 59% support, and you have all, I think, have mentioned all the issues with it, scheduling and equity, all of those pieces come in. You know, if you were going to draw the line at 58%, and keep in mind that we tested 85 million, there's a threshold there that people are willing to support, keeping in mind that you have 82, 80, 70, you have all of those. No, I, the only potential lightning rod that I see is the high school gym specifically, not just based on the, this result. Like I said, it's not 25/75 where it's a no-go. It's just in the past, and the history has been mentioned, it has the potential to be. But the gyms at the elementary school, it's not so much a gym, it's, it's not necessarily a want versus a need. People understand when you're sharing space and the complexity of dealing with the organization of the building.
Excuse me, just a clarification, we do with a lot of technical data, so I apologize on this. There's actually four combined gyms and cafeterias. There's two other gyms that, that would be addressed or expanded, so just for clarification.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's good news.
Yeah.
Yes.
Any other comments or questions, or?
I would just like to know, where, where do we go from here? Are we going to come back and have another meeting?
We have scheduled a meeting July 9th, and we'll be, we'll be talking yet tonight, tomorrow, and come up with a game plan to see if we can put together our information by the 9th.
So, just a question. We have, excuse me, our board retreat scheduled for the 9th also. If the discussion, as we're having it now, is going to be?
We're not having the board retreat. We said if we had to have a meeting on July 9th.
Oh, okay.
Respect to this, we were going to push the retreat out.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, so this will be the only, you know?
Okay, yeah, that was my concern.
If there may be something that comes up that we need to address as a board, employment recommendations?
Okay.
Because of the time of the year we're at, but the, the board meeting's going to be specifically this?
Okay.
In June.
Before we move on, I just want to go back and reiterate the data that we just went over, and, and we went through this on Thursday, it was like, oh, I was prepared to move this forward tonight, and, and guess what? We can't. We got more information, very good information. We found out that there's a tremendous amount of support for our school district, across the board. We, we found out that there is support for referendum, both in operational as well as, as a bond. We just got to figure out the, the scope. And so I think there's an awful good that came out of, out of this, and, and Peter, I also again want to say thank you for this. I think this was probably the most valuable piece of data that we've looked at in terms of giving us some direction, so.
I would too.
We're going to roll our sleeves up, and we're going to come back on the 9th with a proposal. Depending on how confident we are with, with being on target, we may have two questions up for consideration. It all depends on how much work we can get done between now and then, knowing that there's a holiday in between.
So, I don't know how much work this would be for you. The presentation such as this, I know we're going to be putting it on the website, and one of the factors clearly that you were stressing in terms of your presentation to us was where our numbers were versus where you typically see those numbers. If it's not totally cumbersome for you to do it, if there's some way that you could possibly go back and footnote that on some of your slides to be able to brought, to provide, to remind me, and, and to be able to communicate to members of the community that may not have been listening tonight or had access to the information, that would be very helpful.
Sure.
Jeff?
Is it possible that we can just take an excerpt from his presentation and have that in addition to the televised board meeting, so that they can listen to exactly how he explained that data? So just put that out and have that available as a separate presentation?
That would be great, too.
That I don't know how to do.
We would have to do that.
We'll leave this to the professionals.
Perfect, yes.
Yeah, people.
It was a pleasure working with you, and just to reiterate at the end, people oftentimes think I come in and I just throw roses and everything. There are times I go in and tell school boards, there's no chance of success here. You are not anywhere close to that. You should feel very good about where you're going. What you're doing now is fine-tuning. You're in the enviable position of not having to go back to the drawing board. You're on the right track. It's just fine-tuning in order to get the package that's perfect for the residents and optimize chances of success in November, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, I'm going to jump forward to item 13, which is closed session. We need a motion to go into closed session under 1985, parent 1, parent C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, specifically administration stipends and compensation.
Go move.
Second.
Okay, could I, any comments or concerns? Could I have who called the roll?
Mr. Abel?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Dooley?
Yep.
Mr. Conroy?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Rannell?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Finler?
Yes.
Cassis?
Okay, we're in closed session.